Thank you.
Thank you.
Do the lights like they do at the theater.
I'm there.
Yeah.
Mr. Guy's there.
Okay.
Where is Mr. Pierce? Okay, well, he'll be in.
I'm trying to yell ribbons around all of them.
We have some people that I know have signed up to speak. Let's go ahead and go there.
Okay. Mr. Senior, would you like to start the group?
Yes, I think Mr. Pierce will be handy on this one if he's around here. But I'll come anyway.
He'll be here shortly.
Turn my phone off, excuse me.
Thank you. You have to bring pizza the next time.
Oh, I had enough of that at the tavern last night. Good afternoon, everyone. Three things to talk about. Firstly, the two-
Let me have you start with name and-
Rod Senior, Bent Pine Drive, Gateway Greens.
Thank you.
I want to talk about three things. First of all, the proposed development on Griffin and Gateway Boulevard. Two hundred and twenty units, fifty-two foot. This is an official announcement by Dirk Danley, the planner at Lee County. And it appears that it's a done deal. I've talked to Commissioner Pendergrass and several other people down there. I'm sure I'm not the first one to do that. And Cecil confirms that I'm not the first one to do that. And here's what I want to say about that. It appears that we really can't do an awful lot about it because it's historic. It's in the PUD, and the Westinghouse goes back a long way. This is commercial residential property rights that are embedded in that particular property. And no matter how much we fight, it seems like we're stuck with it. I said to Cecil, you know, the county commissioners have got the ultimate power to anything you want, if you really want to. He said, yeah, the only thing we actually can do is to, three of us to gang together and pull those rights away. But that's going to make, require a huge compensation to the landowner because you're pulling away the property rights that are embedded in it. And therefore, he doesn't think that we're going to have any chance of getting three commissioners to spend Lee County taxpayers' money to bail out a landlord, a landowner. So, that being said, then what remains, I mean, I'm sure you guys are discussing the utilities and supplies of utilities to that particular property. But there's another thing that you can do, and I'm not sure you know this, and I talked to Cecil about this. I said to him, you know, it goes back to two thousand and four, and I spent three months walking the streets of, because I'm proud of my community. And Timberidge was just being built at that time, and they were, and WCI were going to build these cheap shingle roofs on there. And I didn't think it was appropriate. So, I got two thousand petitions signed, and I delivered them to Al Hoffman and the board at WCI. And it changed their mind, and they built, they put tiled roofs on at Timberidge, and I felt proud of that. And the reason was because it's the main avenue into our community, and I was, I thought I didn't want it to be cheapened. And I think, you know, if, I don't know whether it's going to be the same developer that's there on Daniels next to Jet Blue. Because those places look like army barracks, and I hope it's not going to look like that. And I said to Cecil, what is the county going to do about what they look like? He said, we can't do anything. He said, it is where it is. It's a planning permit. I said, what if they paint them pink or purple? He said, that's the matter for the CDD. Were you aware of that? Okay, I'm just posing the question.
I, now, the district has no permitting or zoning power as to construction or colors. Or scheme, we don't have any covenant enforcement authority. I'm not even sure if there are covenants on that property. But I'm not sure what his basis is for saying we have the ability to determine the colors of the building.
Colors and the appearance and the aesthetics of what's being built there, this CDD apparently can have an influence on that.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, I don't want to, it's a deep subject, and I'm just posing the question for you to think about because I'm thinking, what can we do? I mean, what can we do? That's probably all we can do, is to weigh in on-
When the FBI building went up, it was red brick.
Allow, allow Mr. Senior to say yes or no.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, that's my first point. Just something to think, I'm just out there to think about. Second point, roundabout at Griffin and Gateway Boulevard. Okay. Road turnover, Ed. You know, it's the best thing that we've ever done in this community. And again, I'm going to thank you. It's time. We did some crediting this morning. I'm going to do it this afternoon. And you and Wingard and Cecil did a great job. Pete Dora was cynical, and he didn't think we could get it done, but you did, and it saved us ninety million bucks. But the whole argument was, what's the point in having ownership if you can't control, if you remember all that? And the idea was, you know, Dora wanted to have, be able to have a seat at the table and put traffic calming devices and stuff at Gateway Boulevard. And we really never had that power, was the whole argument behind the turnover, and how we got the community on side. And now what we've got is a roundabout. It's not, it's not approved, to my understanding, talking to Pendergrass. The roundabout at Commerce Lakes is approved, but the one at Griffin is not. It's still up for discussion. And, and therefore, it appears that this district still has the right, the ability to influence that decision if it wants to. Okay, I'm not talking about a seat at the table, but I'm talking about a letter from this committee, from this board to, to the commissioners of Lee County if we so desire to do so. My, my thought on roundabouts is like this. First of all, crossing. Crossing around, I come from England, and we just, we're, it's a land of roundabouts. I've lived with it since I was born. And, and the problem with roundabouts is twofold. First of all, pedestrians, bicycles, schoolkids, golf carts, mothers with strollers. You've got to run the gauntlet, and it's not the same as a disciplined red and green light for all those people crossing and with, I mean, I said to Pendergrass, the worst decision that's been made, as far as I'm concerned, for a long time is putting that charter school where it did.
Putting that what?
The charter school at the bottom of Gateway Boulevard bill. I thought that was, I thought that was an appalling decision. And when you look at the traffic chaos we have, and the parents backed up the, that's another story. But I said, now, we're going to have, it's going to be even worse. We've got this roundabout that's being proposed. Do the planners really know what they're in for? Not only is it going to be hard for pedestrians to cross, you're going to have to burrow some kind of a crosswalk some distance away, presumably. I haven't seen the design. But it's, they're going to run the gauntlet and chase across, asking for accidents. But there's another issue, and I don't know whether you're all roundabout experts. But just, this is, this is the number one hazard in the British road system is roundabouts. I'm not talking about fatal accidents. I'm talking about fender benders. Because what happens is you've got your first, your first car entering the, entering the roundabout, and guess what? People hesitate. It's not like a red and green light. They hesitate because they're not sure. People are whizzing around, and they don't know whether they can get on or off. And what happens is they start, and then they stop. And it's the second car that's the problem, because that second car is looking, is not looking ahead, is looking at the, the traffic coming around the circle because it's his turn next, he thinks, or she thinks. And, and what's happening is that the guy in front is stopped, and now you've got a fender bender, and it's peak time in the morning or in the evening. And how long does it take for fifty cars to back up? Probably three minutes at that time. You're going to have chaos, and it'll happen all the time.
Mr. Senior, I don't mean to interrupt, but we're about two minutes past your time unless the chair wants to.
Thank you, Chris, but I did hear the guy on his noodle speaking for twenty minutes.
Significant issue.
I think this is important, but thanks, and I'll be trying to brief. So, for those reasons, I, I think, I think we need to lobby the county to put traffic lights there. Pendergrass tells me he's scared because it means taking out live oaks. You remember the Royal Palms contentious issue bill? You know, Frank Mann and Pendergrass were at each other's throats because Frank was hugging the trees, and Pendergrass was chopping them down until we found a way through it.
Thanks to you, Tim.
I'm sorry?
You did a good job.
Well, thanks. I don't mean me. I'm saying we. And, and, and what's happened, what's happening here, and the political winds are blowing because Pendergrass is sensitive to chopping live oaks down, because if you put traffic lights down there, they're going to have to chop some live oaks down. And I'm saying, well, if that's, if that has to be what happens, in my opinion, that's what should happen. And he's sensitive to the community blowback if they, if, if the live oaks have to go near the lights. And I'm saying, give me lights every day and lose some trees, if it's, if it really is that, that's what's at stake.
According to Kenny, they need to go.
Pardon?
According to Kenny, the oak trees need to go.
Well, you've got your line of sight, and I'm not an engineer.
Put some water meters out there.
Ed will tell you. Okay, so, yes, Chris, I'll try and be brief. But, you know, I'm, I'm asking you to think about having a letter from the chairperson to Lee County lobbying them to put lights there on behalf of the CDD.
And, well, going back in time, I do remember a long time ago, and we're talking about oh eight, oh nine, the community asked about putting a roundabout there at Griffin and Gateway, and they told us there was not enough room to do that.
Isn't, haven't times changed?
Yes.
We can see that by the design.
Well-
My, what I'm waiting on, Rod, is I want to see the plans, because I have seen two different plan, and I don't know which one is the correct one. I've seen one that shows a-
For Griffin.
For the apartments.
Oh, for the apartments.
Because to me, the apartments is, I think, maybe our ace. Use the apartments on how they're going to exit as the basis of going against that roundabout.
They're going on Devonshire Lakes Drive.
No, that's not, the latest I heard was is that's only going to be an egress only.
That's it, that's all they need.
But the ingress and egress of the main going in is either going to be on Griffin, or it's got to be on Gateway Boulevard. And if it's on Griffin, that thing has got, because it's just not that wide, it has got to feed right out into a roundabout. That, that's insanity.
It is.
So, my thought was, as soon as I see it, then make the decision and make a motion here that we file a formal request to the county to reconsider. I don't care if they take out eight hundred trees either direction. I don't care.
But Cecil cares because he thinks he might get political blowback, and I think he needs to hear that he won't.
I think, I think perhaps we would do a Survey Monkey and send it out to three or four thousand residents and show him that the oak trees aren't maybe what you think they are.
Chris wants me to finish, so I'm going to just be two minutes on my third point. This is a key to a property in Materita, in Pelican Preserve. Very good friends of mine have moved from Gateway Greens to Materita, and I've been entrusted to look after their house for extended period of time because they're away. And I don't want to name names or name addresses, but I'm looking after their property. I have to go up there all the time. And it takes me five minutes if I was to go through the construction entrance off Gateway Boulevard, and it takes me twenty-five minutes to go around Tree Line. Okay, and so, and I had to go up there urgently two weeks ago because they had a leak. And it took, I had to go all, I have never done the construction entrance, but I just want to pose a question. And that is that, the way I understand it, the service road from Gateway Boulevard to the gate barrier is owned by the master HOA at Pelican Preserve. And exactly the same applies to Tree Line down to the main gate. That section is owned by the Pelican Preserve Master Association. So, I'm allowed to that main gate as a visitor, and then I get, then it becomes a public road. It's a CDD road. Even though it's a gate, I'm, I, it's a public road. So, that being said, I go up the construction entrance if I'm prepared to ride the pothole. I used to live in Labrador, so I know what it's like to drive potholes, right? And I want to get there quick, and providing I'm prepared to drive the potholes, does the guy on that arm who's sitting there, does he have the authority to prevent me getting on the public road, the other side of him, meaning our road? Or is it just a control? Is he just there to ask who you are? And do I have a right to go through to this property, or do I have to go all the way around, is my question?
I'm not ready to answer that, but my understanding is that that's not supposed to be a general ingress and egress from Gateway Boulevard to the community. I think through, per the development order that the city adopted way back when.
When the city of Fort Myers put together a development order, actually amended the development order, they designated that strictly as a service road and not entrance egress for general residents. However, there are certain of us, myself included, who think that what made a lot of sense in two thousand and two, three, four, or five, so that the kids in their hot rod Fords couldn't come blowing through Pelican Preserve and wake up us oldsters, doesn't make a whole lot of sense right now when we've got hundreds if not thousands of people residing back in that, like, that back area. And if they want to get out of Pelican Preserve in a hurry, for whatever reason.
Hurricane Irma, for example?
For example. The only way to get out of there is to use that service road bronco notwithstanding. Besides that, Gateway CDD has service lines on that road, and it has to stay open for their, our use. The answer to your question is, I don't really know, but I think we're going to have to keep it open, and sooner or later, it's going to be open to residents, at least for a exit gate.
Okay, anyway, I don't, I didn't expect you to-
Right.
Be, be, give me an affirmative.
Also want to point out, Rod, that the officials from Lee County Transportation sat right there in the front row and told us about the roundabout, and several others told them we didn't like it, and this is why we didn't like it. And we might as well have been talking to this back wall, okay? They'd already made up their mind. They weren't here to, to hear what we had to say. They were here to tell us what it was going to be.
Okay, so, thank you, Chris. The guy would therefore with the arm at the end of that service road, whoever he is, I don't know who he works for, has he got the authority to stop me going onto a CDD road?
I can't, the road is not a CDD road.
No, the other side. The Pelican Preserve is.
If you have the ability to travel that private road, then you can get on the CD road, but do you have the ability to travel that private road is the question.
You do when you go from Tree Line to the main gate, because that's the same ownership. It's the HOA.
No, that, no, 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 that's the CDD. From Tree Line.
Oh, I, I thought it was the HOA. I apologize.
Up to the guardhouse? No.
Okay, so, they, so there's the question, do I have the right to travel that service road, and does the guy have the right to stop me going through?
The owner and operator of that service road can tell you that.
Who employs the guard?
Thank you, Rod.
Thanks.
Who employs the guard?
It's a, it's a developer.
Developer.
They, they use it to restrict access. No.
Chris, who else has signed up to speak?
It is.
And our next is Philip Pearson.
Thank you very much for taking the time, taking the time this afternoon to hear me. Philip Pearson, I live on Bent Pine. I'm Gate, Gateway Greens, down the road from Rod. My question is concerning the boardwalk development that is coming in, and whether the CDD has made any determination or request to the developers regarding the original, uh, master, master plan regarding the Lee County ordinance of eighty-five dash fifteen, which said that the corner of Gateway and Griffin was deemed to be used for a town center, and it could also be used and it was re-designated to become multifamily. However, question was raised whether Royal Greens, which is in the original area, would that qualify as the only supposedly multifamily, multifamily dwelling that was authorized in the original one A area? Because if, if that was the case, then, then that would require, I believe, a rereading of the original, uh, community development projects that allows two, meaning Royal Greens already satisfied the requirement. Now, Boardwalk wants to come in and develop the second multifamily homes. My concern is to echo what Mr. Senior said, is that, you know, the quality of life, traffic, and the density, and if the developer wants to do that, the development costs, infrastructure costs, which is the current case to include the traffic, should, all the total costs should be borne by the developer, not just, not just our subuses, but also the additional burden of establishing roundabout, water usage, electrical usage, traffic, school district usage, all that, should be put into their impact fees. Impact fees are probably another issue that could be approached. Are they still under the abatement so that we have, uh, more developers coming in, or the, we, is the county raising them? But my main question is concerning whether the original, uh, community development plan, and one, as it reads, one A, allowed for one multifamily dwelling, which Royal Greens would, would satisfy, or was it improperly changed to allow to now have two, or none, as long as they're under the cap of three hundred and twenty homes? See, they put it on two twenty so they didn't have to go back to the, this is developer, so they didn't have to go back to the county commissioner and put up to three hundred. However, that's not the issue. The issue would be whether the original, uh, community use allows for only one multifamily home, which is Royal Greens. Is Royal Greens counted in that, and then Boardwalk now wants us to make an allowance, so they want to build it. That's just my issue. Another issue, just a quick, trying to talk out of the box, you know, maybe we assess the CDD and we buy the land, even though that would be very, very costly, but at least it would be an option to where the developer gets, hey, at least want to keep some green space and plant some more trees in honor of Ed Trinkle, Tinkle there. Whatever. Could be the Tinkle Memorial Park there or something.
I didn't like the word memorial.
In honor of his long-term service. I'm just, I'm just trying to offer up and say, I'm really, I was telling the lady there that I'm really upset about the boardwalk because of the qualitative life. Thank you very much.
About a year ago, I brought this at very issue at the county, and the story I was told on that one, and I mentioned this morning in an HOA meeting, is what I was told was that when Royal Green, Royal Green originally was apartments. They switched to condos. And the understanding I have is that that took them out from play in that calculation.
But you see, Boardwalk now wants to have those condos, so they're just switching it back.
Well, no, I, what I was saying is, is that when Royal Greens were here, and they were an apartment, had they not changed to condos, I don't think they could have built those apartments in where they're building them now, because the limit would already been exceeded. Instead, they converted Royal Greens to condos, which opened up the two hundred and twenty space in that, what they call, what, Region One?
Region One area.
Region One, one A, whatever. So, that's the excuse I was told then. To me, multifamily, whether it's a condo or apartment, is the same thing, but some don't agree with that.
The, well, the county planner agreed with it. So, the, so the original, original approximate cost is Royal Greens, the one that is in agreement with the original covenant that established the multifamily dwelling irregardless, and then therefore Boardwalk would have to ask for an abatement or say, hey, we can't do it without our, without our approval. Then we'd have to say, okay, well, this is what we want, because the community still has no town center, still has no air, um, parts, you know. But that's the thing. And if that's the case, then you can make a very good case that it's just a shell game.
That's, I, I don't mind trying, trying to do that, but that's what I was told, is, is that when it's switched from an apartment to a condo, that freed up that space.
It's incorrect, because the, it's, it's the old shell game with the developers. It's just like the shell game of trying to say, hey, in order to keep the economy going and everything else, we've got a reduction on the impact fees by the developers, you know, counties. So, those are things that have to be addressed and say, hey, play full cost, just like the, just like the piping for the water. What's it required? Six inch, then that's what you're going to go. Not three inch, not two inch. And this is what you got to do. And then, it's just like the developer fees. X, why not X plus Y? Because it is, it is, it is an overall quality of life issue, and that's a great way owners, gateway owners have to come to an agreement, or at least awareness that this is a major impact on us.
Thank you. Chris, who else do we have time to speak?
Sharon DeRosers.
Getting better at that, Chris.
Thank you.
Kay Rosier.
Kay Rosier.
Uh, just a quick aside to Mr. Senior's comments. I was one of three people from the community who went to the meeting where the county commissioners voted for the roundabouts, and we made all of the concerns, the three of us made presentations, all the concerns that you've voiced. And I'm one of the tree huggers. I don't like to see trees cut down, and, and I made the point. I'm sure they're taking trees down to make their roundabout also. So, it was made to Mr. Pendergrass, and he voted in favor of the roundabouts, so. Yeah, I know most of you already have seen the concept site plan now. This is what they're going to put. I received it, all fifty-eight plus pages, and I tried to go through it and see what any of it meant. And it's very difficult to figure out from the, from all the different pages that they gave, what the impact really is. But what I came away with was that it's five, four-story buildings, as you know. There's a big area that is undeveloped, and they don't say what they're going to do with it. Originally, we, when we saw the first set of plans, they said they would not exit onto Devonshire Road. But after reviewing this ADD two thousand eighteen dash one zero zero three six, and after speaking with Dirk Danley, the senior planner, I am extremely disappointed to see that we will have this dense development plopped down in the middle of Gateway. All of our voiced concerns as to density, height, and other impacts like water and cars have been completely ignored. But I continue to press on. We have to accept that you and the city have decided five, four-story buildings of two hundred and twenty units, although their website says two hundred and forty, with four hundred plus cars is acceptable. I remain appalled. Now we are faced with one, two, and three-bedroom units, which means much more than two hundred and twenty people. We're talking about couples, families. So, you're talking about a lot more people as far as water impacts and so forth. The four hundred plus cars is also, but that's going to affect our water supply. And it will also have these four hundred cars now exiting onto Devonshire Road through the same access that now the bank has, is what I was told by Mr. Danley. The entrance and e, and egress will be also on Gateway Boulevard, which should be a lot of fun, with nothing going out on Griffin. And I like your idea of the light, because the light maybe would then allow them to use that Griffin Drive as one of their egress places. Nowhere does it say how much of the wetlands in the preserve that they plan on impacting, even though we know, oh, we're not going to touch it. They immediately went to the DOT, no, Army Corps, and made a proposal to fill in part of the wetlands and takes part of the preserve. On the diagram, from what I can see, they have a wall between them and Devonshire. But now over here, where they have their pool, it looks as if they're in the middle of the wetlands area, and they probably want to cut down all of the preserve so they can have a view of the water. I, I don't know that for sure, because I went to their website, and the website has two or three pages of all of the details about these marvelous apartments that they're going to build, but no picture. Gateway Sun has published a rendering, a picture. I don't know where they got it from or how they decided that that was it. But it does resemble those buildings down on Daniels that are ugly. And you, you have just told Mr. Senior that you have no influence on color or any of that. But I remember when the FBI building was built, and it was a red brick building, because it's a federal building, and somebody here was able to influence them into stuccoing it. They still kept their picket fence, but they took the barbed wire off, so we can have some impact in that respect. And I, I'm hopeful that, even though I didn't get any return from the EPA or the Southern District of the Army Corps about the wetlands, that you might have some impact on finding out what they are planning there. And if you don't have that information now, maybe you can get it from them. I want you to represent us. I want to know what you're going to do when the proposal that you said they have to bring before you comes in. Are you able to say yea or nay on any of it? Those are my questions.
I think the big thing, we've got to wait till we get a formal set of plans in here.
That's what I want to know. And when that set of plans comes in, do you have any influence?
We do with the wetland. We do with the water. We do with the sewer. We do with the stormwater. We do with the reuse.
What about the entrance and exit?
Nope.
No.
Nothing.
Nothing. We don't have general zoning or permitting power. We have authority over approvals for the district infrastructure.
Okay, they're going to put an eight-foot wall or eight-foot barrier of some sort between us, Devonshire, and, and the place. There is an existing wall. I don't think it's eight feet, but it might be. That's not going to disguise a fifty-two-foot building. There is an existing wall. I don't think it's eight feet, but it might be. Uh, that's not going to disguise a fifty-two-foot building. But uh again, is there any way that when that plan comes in, that we'll be able to have a, uh, at least a vision of it?
I'm gonna be looking at it, I can tell you that.
Right, but what about the rest of us peons?
I think that, that uh plan, when they come to us again, is our ace to go back to the county and argue for stoplight.
Yes, definitely for a stoplight, but I want to know what about the appearance of this development?
I, I only like to fight the fights that I can win, and you ain't gonna win that one.
So nothing, we can't say, what about if they want to put a fence or whatever around our wat- our the pond?
Unfortunately, it's not a district authority or power.
Our district doesn't have that authority.
And what about the preserve?
The water management and the drainage and wetlands that the district either owns or easements. Yes, we have control over those, but it appears from the site plan attached to that ADD that they're staying out of that wetlands and drainage easement now, from the standpoint of any structures or.
But what about taking down vegetation of the preserve?
They don't have that ability to do that in our, absent our approval.
That's why I'm waiting on the plan, to see exactly what they come in with.
Okay. And by the way, if you read the S H, S H Communities uh propose or statement about their development, it talks about the lush uh tropical vegetation they're going to put around and whatnot. I can't see any place for it on this. So they are, are they talking about our preserve as their lush tropical vegetation, or my backyard?
Believe me, I'm gonna fight on this, but I want to see the plan first, because I don't want to play my card until they play theirs.
And it's still incomprehensible to me that we, we can't really get a developer. They, Dirk Downey told me, well, look up Caye Pelon, which is on their, down there? Caye Pelon is a uh an island in the Caribbean. There's no developer named Caye Pel- Cayo Pelon or any commu- uh, you know, company named that. And so he did give me this S H Communities website uh to look at the description, but not a picture, so. I just think the whole thing's disgusting. But I hope that you will represent us well and really look in detail and see anything that we can do to influence it, to make it a, a friendly impact on the community instead of an invasive impact.
What concerns me is is that when we go and if we go to the deal of trying to get the stoplight, and then we have an uproar with a bunch of tree huggers in the community that want to keep the eight hundred feet of trees both directions, here we go.
Well, I'm waiting to see when they start the, the develop, the uh roundabout at Griffin, uh at Commerce Lakes, which I think is a horrendous idea also. But uh when they put that in, I want to see how many trees they end up taking down. Because as I explained to Rod, they, they, they kept telling us, oh, well, your crosswalks and whatnot are all going to be included, and they're going to be away from the develop, the roundabout. Well, you can't put a crosswalk across the median that exists because it's got trees on it. It's got vegetation. You, so you're gonna take down trees anyway.
Yeah, they, they made it perfectly clear. The crosswalks are going to be queued in the middle of the uh roundabout. It's the only way to get across. There's gonna be a queue. In other words, you go halfway over, you stop, then you go the other half.
Oh, if you look at the direct, the designs I saw, they are off, but they're multiple. So you go like halfway across, and then you have to wait, and then you go another halfway across, and you have to wait.
Rod, Rod hit the nail on the head. With the combination of the crosswalks and if there's flashers, which means the traffic has to stop, somewhere up that uh road, both directions, they're gonna start bumping into each other.
Yeah.
Because they think, and they've been told this is a continuous flow. They forgot to put the asterisks, except when a person is crossing the street.
Well, and I, there are places in England now where they're replacing their roundabouts because they haven't worked well, that there's too many accidents. They might be smaller accidents, not, you know, uh fatalities, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Who's next?
Last but not least, Mr. Jim Brand.
Jim Brand Hampton Park. Uh, I didn't intend to speak this afternoon, so I didn't bring my documentation with me. But uh this piece of property we're talking about at Gateway and Griffin, I contacted Lee County. I spoke at a Lee County Commissioners' meeting about it, against it, uh like the ladies' comments. Uh, county commissioner didn't care what I said. It's a done deal. But at the back of the property, during stormwater situations like we have frequently, water flows across the back of that. So I contacted South Florida Water Management District to find out if they had had any discussion with the owner of this property. The owner of the property goes by Gateway LLC. That's what they go by. Uh, and the answer from South Florida Water Management District was no. They had had no contact from this developer. And they told me that I should contact this, uh, the, some district manager, not Gateway CDD District, but a Florida district manager. And I sent him an email, and he responded back, and I think it was, me was Johnson, and he said, no, we've not had any uh requests from this developer to just how we handle the stormwater flow. It's at the very back of the property. So I don't have the documentation with me. I can send it to you, Ed, if you'd like, or to Margaret. But I think you all might want to discuss this issue with South Florida Water Management District to see if it really is an issue or not. Thank you.
The one reason I, I have some confidence in that aspect of what they're doing is the engineering firm they're using is Holmontis. Holmontis basically did Gateway. So they at least are knowledgeable. Now, if they try to pull a fast one, then that's a different story, but Holmontis knows Gateway. So we'll see what happens.
In my discussion with South Florida Water Management District, they had not been engaged.
Yeah, I'm waiting to see, sometime they gotta be doing plans.
And I bet you they're taking out all the oak trees that are in front of that?
Yes, Mr..
If I, just, just for clarification, when I first provided a copy of this administrative amendment, and then I went back and looked, there was a prior, many, many years ago, South Florida permit application that was withdrawn or expired. That was at Cayo Pelon. If you, if you plug in the developer's name, if you plug in the section township range, there's apparently no pending South Florida application. And I'm on the list, and I think Chris might be also. I get alerts for every application. I get, once a week, I get a list of all the South Florida ERP applications. And in any involving Gateway, I get specific ones for Gateway. So we have our eyes on the permitting activity in South Florida. And so they may, you know, they may have their zoning approval, or that's, but they still have the development order issues that yet to come. This is one of the first hurdles, right? If you read the ADD.
Would they submit plans to us for approval before they would get a, a South Florida?
They're supposed to have a pre-application for the, for the district infrastructure, the water management, under our permit criteria manual. They're supposed to tell us in advance before they apply, even come to us before they apply to South Florida.
Let's move on, please.
Sorry.
And Ed brings us to the district attorney. Bring it back to you, different subject.
You're, I, uh, I think I mentioned, I may have mentioned last time, the zoning verification letter for the FPL easements is in the county staff hands, reviewing it.
Excellent.
And so we should be getting a response in the next week or so. I have copies of the submittal without all the attachments and the email from them today as to that. The AGO request was sent in, and I don't have anything back, but that's not unusual. I've been working with Bob Geppert, in district staff and engineer, on funding additional aerators and ponds, whether we can use the remaining bond proceeds for that, that, based upon a conference call we had today, that might be possible. Because there initially were forty aerators, ponds and forty aerators were called for in the engineers' reports as amended. And they built thirty-eight. So even though they used up money, quote unquote, under the estimates, there might be additional funds in that bond fund that can still be tapped for that work. I, I see Ed has a copy of the letter from Pavey's Law from Chris Shields about Magnolia Lakes. I'm working with Chris to draft a response and saying, that's after your master meter, that's your issue, not ours.
That was gonna be my question. Is it after the master meter? So it's on their side of the master meter?
Yes.
This is another master metered community?
Yes.
So that'll be the, the short, sweet response.
What, Chris knows that. What, what are we missing? Chris, Chris Shields know better than that.
I can't say why the attorney writes a letter or not. I didn't mean to steal your thunder, but I saw the letter.
I'll just add that it was uh kind of funny that the break was right in front of Flavia's house. But when it was excavated, it appeared that the pipe was off-center because they had flexible joints on each end. And then an excavator had gone in to pull it straight because the pipe was dented in and crushed. And inside the pipe where that water's running through, where it caused that pin leak.
Why wouldn't the master meter be on the outside of the property where we come in off the?
It is.
That, the maps that they did, didn't even show to me the location of where the break was, but when the picture, it looked like it was within the development.
Now, the meter's on the outside of the development, it's like Cypress K and the others, um, off of Griffin Boulevard and the break as well.
Oh, the, the, the break is not at the meter. It's further into their system.
Yes, sir.
Gee, Chris, they know better than that.
And uh, our staff did go out there, and one thing we did do is they, they had an irrigation company come to fix it, and they had some Home Depot repair kits. And we said, this is a pressurized line. You guys are just gonna blow it out, try to fix it like that. But we kept our hands off it.
It could have been entertaining.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Our district engineer didn't have anything on the agenda, so they are not here tonight, so.
I did, I did have one follow-up comment I discussed with Danny, but because the board asked um about why the other bidders didn't bid on the lake.
Yes.
And uh they didn't want anything to do with it. And Matt Toward just threw a big number at it because he thought somebody would bid lower. So they, they just weren't interested in it. And that bid is twenty-five percent higher uh on the linear foot costs than any of the other lakes. It has.
Well, I'm glad we didn't accept it like that.
Well, and what it is, is the, the access getting in and out of the lake is, is confined to fifteen-foot drainage easements that we have going in and out, and it's really hard to work in and out.
My, my fear is, is it's, it's in non-compliance. It's gotta be fixed. And if we don't accept that bid, we're gonna accept a higher bid.
You're gonna accept a bid from, he just, our district manager said they just threw a big number at us.
Well.
You're gonna accept that?
I didn't finish. I said that when you got to bid, again, it could be a higher number. If they didn't like.
I'll bet you, I'll bet you're wrong. I think we, I think to have a better discussion of this, we may want, and I think it was tabled for Christopher to find out. I think uh placed on the next board meeting for a decision by the board.
You are right. How, how long is the bid good for?
Uh, the bid's good for thirty days, and also we'll bring the contracts to the next board meeting for all the lakes.
And Metar was the low bidder?
Yes. And, and the other one, same thing. They just didn't want anything to do with it because getting in and out.
There's no doubt in my mind. It's, it is a bear.
It will be difficult.
Mr. Manager, you are up.
What's the cost for that?
Yeah, well, I had, had uh two things I wanted to bring up under my time. And one is I went to the Magnolia Lakes Homeowners Association and spoke to them about the landscaping plan and handed out the landscaping plan. And uh basically told them there were requirements from the Water Management District and the county to plant an upland preserve, and it couldn't be landscaped with irrigation like a homeowner would. Uh, but I did hand that out to them, and I also talked to Dana Hume about getting a copy of the uh plan that was submitted to the county. And Dana's response was, per discussion in my direction from the school district, once the landscape plan has been approved by Lee County, we will come meet with you and interested residents from Magnolia to discuss the landscaping and mitigation plantings. But the school board did not release it, and Development Services, I think even with the public request, said the product's under review, so they don't have anything to release.
I, I disagree. It doesn't matter. Anything that's submitted is a public record, absent an exemption, and it's quote, under review, close quote, is not an exemption under Florida law. So you may want to push a little harder, Chris. I mean, if you want me to, I can send the county an email that says, give it to us within five days, because that triggers us getting our attorney's fees. We have to sue Lee County to get the public records. I mean, I know it's kind of snippy, but I mean, that, that's just uncomfortable, in my humble opinion.
It shouldn't be that hard to get it. You ought to, they ought to be willing to provide it, the public record.
What are they trying to hide?
Well, I don't think they are. I think that they're doing exactly what they said they were planning on doing, which is a three-foot berm, a six-foot fence, and they may plant a single row of trees, and that's the extent of their landscape.
But I mean, why wouldn't they just give us that?
Right. Yeah, that's what I mean. That's, I, I, the under-review exemption is not, my understanding, a valid exemption.
I'd send the email. Have, have Tony send the email.
Chris, can you send me the email you sent them? I think you did. So if you can just resend it to me.
Just a reminder that public.
Jen, and I'll copy the county attorney's office. John Sadeema, John's always good about nudging him on public record stuff.
And the only other thing I wanted to ask Brian Boucher to step up. He's our new Public Works Manager. He's been working for the city of Fort Myers, and he spent the first week with us going out with all the different staff members and uh out in the field with utilities and parks and rec, um, out in the field with Al to look over all the facilities. We had kind of a get-together luncheon last Friday, and uh he's basically been doing kind of the same thing this week, going out looking at the projects, looking at the stormwater work um that we have, looking at the weir with the crack in and out of Gateway Greens. And we'll have a diver out there tomorrow to investigate that. Brian, you want to just get up and say hello?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Brian Boucher. I'm actually a resident of Gateway for the last twenty years, so I know a lot of your issues. I'm learning more in the first two weeks.
Which oak tree-infested community do you live in?
I have one in front of my yard. Your, what Kenny entailed about your oak trees, they're in your stormwater as well, folks. And we're, I've gotten with Chris, Matt Toward, and we'll be doing a five-year maintenance program. You've been neglected for thirty-plus, and we're starting.
Good.
And I'm meeting with Chris tomorrow. We got a diver, matter of fact, over by Cecil's house. I noticed a crack in your weir. And you got dirt sinking two feet deep already. That's an indication I have.
Which, which side? On that home side or the golf course side?
It would be on the home side, so we have.
We didn't have one of those barges hit that dude, did we?
No, you have a crack down the seawall.
Okay.
And somebody probably tried to patch it a while back. I don't know how long ago.
Yeah, it looks like it was.
But it's.
Never come up.
Only way to find out how far deep it is, I gotta have a diver going to water.
Is there a rat hole there on the uh slope?
You got about a two-foot hole on that slope going down.
Okay.
I need to address it ASAP because that's a safety issue. I don't know how far it goes, but before hurricane hits, I want to take care of that, because it could get worse. I mean, last thing you want to do is lose part of a weir because of a sinkhole.
Bill's phone number and tell him the surf's up.
But.
It's coming his way.
It's only gonna drain into Pelican Reserve. It's okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Old people float.
So me, me and Mia Sells be getting pretty good friends here in the last week. She showed me every single weir we got in this neighborhood and some I didn't even know we had, but that's fine. We're gonna do due diligence, and I'm gonna basically, for the first month or two, talk to Chris. I gotta evaluate your stormwater systems.
Thank you.
It's really neglected, just letting you know. And your tree roots, whether you like oak trees or not, I dealt with this in the city. They get into those things, they tear them up. And the only way to fix it is, there's a company we've used before, and I probably ended up using them out here. You go in there and you line the trees out, and you root them out, and you put a liner in there to fix it. Luckily, most of your pipes are all concrete, except for one development. I won't mention it. It's rear easement. Somebody did something they probably shouldn't have, but Chris and I have talked about it, and that's something we'll have to address later, but it's gonna take time. But what I want to do is do a maintenance program where we have different zones, and we're gonna tackle a zone a year.
Have you seen our NPDS permit filing showing our five-year and ten-year plans?
That's next on my list.
No, I mean, have you seen the one we've got?
No. I went to the meeting today with the county. Me and Mia Sells did, so.
Get, get, get a magnifying glass, because you ain't gonna find it.
Well, there's your answer.
We haven't got one.
Okay, well, that helped me out there. But no, it's, it's gonna be a challenge in looking at it, and also I'm involved with the pool and the rec, so. I got some issues, I guess, for today, but we'll be addressing it's more of a learning curve as we have new people to pool. And let me get, I will take it and thank you. So.
Anybody have any questions for him while he's at the podium?
No.
Where you been last five years?
Where have I been?
Where you been last five years?
Well, I spent twenty years at a phone company, so I can tell you all about CenturyLink.
Just got finished with him. Don't need him anymore.
Last few years, I've been with the city of Fort Myers. I was assistant superintendent there of Public Works. And I was in stormwater, and I had facilities and all that. So it's refreshing. I'm in my own backyard. I never drove a mile to work in my life, so this is totally. And I was in stormwater and I had facilities and all that, so it's refreshing, I'm in my own backyard, I never drove a mile to work in my life, so this is totally nice.
A, other question, have you, uh, read what has been handed out to us, the new pond standards?
Nope.
Okay, would like to have you read the old pond standards, read our development orders and then read the new pond standards, because you're surely gonna get quizzed on it.
Will do, because like I said, me and Chris Matt Tire's meeting tomorrow, then we're actually going over all the stormwater as well. What he's cleaned out, because they've been tackling the worst areas first.
It's been bad.
Uh, I know the roads, you have sidewalk issues, I also have sidewalks. You have some real bad ones, I had my team, all two of them, identify the ten worst list. I do know I ride my bike in this neighborhood every weekend and I can tell you a lot of them already. One of them's gonna be in front of that Gateway, uh, grade school. Those trees have buckled those sidewalks up. And I don't know about you, but sidewalks are not the way to go back, you put asphalt, but you gotta put tree barriers in and cut roots back and everything else if you don't wanna remove the trees. And that's gonna be a five-year temporary fix most likely.
I agree.
That ain't permanent because it just comes back. I dealt with pavers downtown the city of Fort Myers, so I can tell you all about it, you're just band-aiding it, you're not fixing the problem.
I agree.
But.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
And, and Chris, if I may, just Chris, as a follow-up, to the extent you found all those areas, I assume you're flagging them or marking them?
They are spray painted, orange.
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll see some sidewalks painted.
Sidewalks.
Understand?
Thanks to Mia Sells, so those are the ones we have identified.
Okay, good. Good.
And we're, we're prioritizing them by what we think safety-wise first. And that's what we're gonna have to hit and.
I'm always glad to hear that, I know, I figure Chris has a proactive approach to it and that.
He does and we're kinda on the same page with that because we're definitely trying to hit it off at the pass.
Yeah, that becomes a cottage industry for certain law firms otherwise.
And our motto is reduce exposure.
Yeah, perfect. You've seen the trees penetrating Gateway Boulevard?
Yes.
That one scares me.
Here's the biggest.
That's a county exposure that they can come back and get us real quick.
Here's the biggest issue with Griffin and both Gateway. I know for a fact the county said take all those trees out before, when we turned all that over years ago, you all know it and I know it, we didn't do it. Now we're gonna be on the hook of it. Not only your sidewalks are crumbling up, it's getting into your storm drains, your swells, those are popping up. I dealt with palm trees downtown, they do the same thing. If you're not gonna remove them, then you're basically just putting Band-Aids on them. You're cutting those kerblits out, you're shaving a tree out, you're putting a weed barrier or a tree barrier we use down in those. Put it back, you're good for about four or five years and you come back doing the same thing.
Thank you, we're gonna move on to our action items, appreciate it, thank you, nice to meet you, welcome aboard.
Awesome, no problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Four A is agreement with Guardian Community Resource Management for SRF program.
Sure, and this is for the, the next phase of the, uh, Pond Bank program and we've been using Guardian, um, for all segments of the Pond Bank management for, uh, Davis Bacon Wages and some of the other, uh, DEP requirements. And basically, we've just, um, expanded this to get him involved with the pay requests and the submittal for reimbursement. And this is all that this firm does.
And that, what's his, what's his name?
Yeah, Corbin Allday.
Corbin, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, his, his rates are very reasonable and you can see the charge and this'll all be included under the technical services, um, for reimbursement with the SRF.
Move approval.
I second.
Madam Chair, before the votes call, just, I sent Chris some suggested edits to it.
Already sent it out to him.
Good, thank you.
Took care of it.
I second.
Okay, got a motion in a second to approve the Lake Bank Restoration SRF Loan Management Services, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, proposal for GIS mapping.
And I was gonna let Austin do this and Austin, you have three minutes. See, you may, you may wanna go from the beginning to the recommendation.
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
Here, there's another picture. It's my house.
Guess I'll just, uh, go from here. So, uh, my name's Austin Manoli, I'm the intern out here and I'm here to submit a proposal for funding for GIS mapping of the district's utilities. So basically, our objective is to create a set of data layers that contain location and technical specifications for all the utilities' features in the district and all this data, according to the proposal submitted by our consultant, it's gonna be supplied in Esri Shapewell format, which means that we can use it on any sort of software at one if we decide to switch over from what we've decided we're gonna use right now. Like if you wanted to go to Esri ArcMap for some reason, you could use that. Uh, basically, the justification for our project is, we want to eliminate the need for paper maps. Uh, they're clumsy, inefficient, take up space, they're deteriorating because some are like almost forty years old at this point. And also, they can be potentially inaccurate due to changes that weren't properly documented during construction. And basically, a GIS map will provide a unified and portable data set, which can allow staff to access information in the field. If you have a laptop, you know, running, uh, GIS software, you can access these maps in the field and you can have a complete map for the entire district. And you can also make revisions based on maintenance or any alterations that you find that were made. Uh, this is just a map supplied by our consultant showing how we're planning on breaking up the work and the projected timetable and costs for each of those areas. Just two-day progress and expenses, we've used up all of the money we were previously budgeted under the, uh, given, uh, purchase order.
Who's our consultant?
Uh, MKCS LLC is, uh.
MKSC LLC?
MKCS.
MKCS, is that somebody real tall?
Yeah, he's, uh, lives down in, uh, the sterile area, San Carlos Park, I guess, probably a better description.
Okay.
Um, so our proposed expenses for this project are gonna be seventy-six thousand dollars to complete mapping for the entire district, which comes out to about thirty-three cents per linear foot, which is down from ninety cents, which is what we originally projected our cost to be. And the prospective completion date is December first, twenty twenty. And the staff recommendation would be for, um, board consideration and approval for funding the amount of seventy-six thousand dollars to MKCS LLC to, uh, complete GIS mapping. Thank you, that's it, are there any questions?
Go ahead, Mrs. Flaherty.
Uh, yes.
Um, that's the only bid we have is for that one place?
Yeah.
Why come we don't have any bids for any other places?
Well, we, um, were originally using, uh, Passerell and Associates and they quoted us at something like, I wanna say it was over a dollar per linear foot.
I still think we need to have other bids.
It's a professional services, it's typically not bid.
Well. Tetra, Tetra Tech could also do this too, so, and they're our engineers, so I'm just wondering why we didn't get a price from them.
I don't think they do GIS services, do they?
I'm, I'm, I don't know.
They don't, I don't think.
I don't know.
I just wanted to make a note that, let the record reflect that Mister Guy just left the meeting, it's five-twenty.
Questions, Mr. King?
No.
I don't have any questions either, I know this is something that we really, really need to do and I know you've been working on this. So I'll make a motion to approve it, you've stated where the funding will come from, so.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve this recommendation, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, Mrs. Flaherty opposed it, motion passes two to one. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and for the record also, one, there being addendum to it, the, the typical public records addendum is part of this because it's noted in the proposal, these records are gonna be secure under the Florida statutes, they can be exempt and confidential because they involve the district's utility systems.
Well, the question on that, how's come, because I was just talking to, uh, Bob Gepert before the meeting, uh, Pelican Reserve has opened theirs up to all the members of the community and get right access to them.
The district's utility?
Yeah.
The, uh, they don't have the utility information, they have the stormwater drains and stormwater pipes and their fishing locations, they don't have actually water and sewer lines.
So water and sewer is the separation?
Yeah, and, and that, and that was a, that was a byproduct of, of nine eleven, they said, all kinds of plants and specs.
Oh, yeah, I understand, I just was, I thought that they had water and sewer on theirs also, okay.
And one thing, um, that, even though our emphasis has been on the water and sewer, um, utility, um, we've also included irrigation and we also have the drainage features and attributes in this data set, so we can use it for stormwater management also.
So you've got a reuse, uh, layer?
Yes, sir.
With both the main reuse and the control reuse?
Yes, sir.
Both with the, all the, uh, heads and nozzles and controllers and nodes and all that?
Not that far, it's all aligned, size, material and depth.
Great, great.
And on, on the drainage, we have the drainage pipe size and material and also the structures, um, type, throat, rim elevations and the inverts on all four sides.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
When will you be done?
Uh, we're projecting, uh, the December first, somewhere around.
Are you, are you going to accelerate Gateway Greens because of the, uh, cable installation?
We could put them first on the list.
Please?
That's no problem.
We're gonna start digging on or about?
Oh, no, you need to do hunt and find, just like they did in Stony Brook.
We, we talked about that today, we don't wanna do hunt and find, uh, we're gonna start digging September first.
Hit it and repair it is more like what it is.
So September first?
I think we can have that done before then.
And the contractor's going to give, so the vendor's going to give us a map within the next ninety days with their plans? And it's gonna be done in four quadrants, so I could feed you those quadrants as we get them to know where we will be digging first.
Probably be a big help to them, instead of going through map sheets to.
Be a big help to thirteen-hundred-and-ten residents when we don't break up every water line and have what happened in Stony Brook.
Well, would they be contacting Sunshine One Call anyways?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
That came up today, yeah, but some of those people don't accurately locate their water lines, like we found out at an intersection up in Stony Brook.
And some of the stormwater piping that may or may not.
Storm, stormwater pipe is not as cast catastrophic, uh, unless it's at the middle of an intersection and then it caves in, but, uh, okay, we'll work with you on that and get that, great.
Okay, I got, next one is a request for a board workshop on the pond standards and I think that that would be, I'll, I'll let Al take care of that, thank you, Al.
Al, here is Gateway Services District Natural Resources. Um, basically, this agenda is just to, um, and you've all had the preliminary document and, you know, hope you have a chance to review it. Um, this is, what we're asking here is just to set a date for a workshop, um, for the pond standards.
And I think, uh, tentatively, Chris and I were talking about making that March nineteenth, does that work?
I think that would work just fine.
I think that's, that's our next workshop, so.
Can our director get familiar with it that fast?
That's a month away.
I think he can, yes.
Okay.
He's a very bright gentleman.
I'm just, I'm just checking his multitasking ability.
Oh, yeah, we've been multitasking a, a lot this last week.
I think all of his drive time he used to have to the city of Fort Myers, he's using that saving, so, might be familiarizing himself with the community.
He's got an extra hour every morning to review a document.
That's right, that's what I was gonna say.
End it tonight.
He said that, yeah.
But yet, um, the pond, the pond committee has worked up this, uh, document that was provided to you as their preliminary document. And like I said, basically, all we're asking for is to set a date for the workshop.
Nineteenth.
March nineteenth?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, and with that, Madam Chairman, I'll, I'll provide the notice, Chris, I want you to prepare the notice and send it into the paper.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll get it on the website.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
We did have some of the members of the pond committee that have maybe calm dissenting opinions or other viewpoints. And I said, the workshop is a time where you can present those ideas in open discussion, you know, and bring those up to the board.
Absolutely.
So what is this, is this a, a consen, a consensual, what's that guy in New York's having all the trouble? Uh, is this a consensual? Well.
Consensus, is that the word you put to words?
Is, is, is it?
They, they voted on it to present it to the board, but some of them had some other opinions or ideas.
Or dissenting opinions?
Well, that's the time to, to bring it up.
Yeah.
And as I said, it's open discussion and, and that you'll probably have similar people making similar viewpoints that are.
And, and what I'll put in the notice is we have noticed typically that members of some committees may be in attendance, but I'll make sure I specifically call out, uh, the ponds committee also, or the Latoro Workshop Committee, okay. Thank, thank you for that.
And the next item, four D, approve expenditure of Pelican Pond Aeration Repair.
And this is, uh, nineteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars for Pelican to spend on aeration repairs, uh, some of it, uh, from lightning strikes and other.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve, within a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, all in favor. Consent agenda. Anybody wanna pull anything from the consent agenda tonight?
I just have one suggestion or helpful thing, uh, both the advisory committees from both do not have an adjournment time. It would be nice to have an adjournment time in their minutes.
I suspect that, um, well, let's see, the regular meeting one has an adjournment. I'm surprised that that's not there, actually, I did not notice that, okay, I will request that they start noting that.
Okay, thank you.
Can do that, so was that the only thing, Mrs. Flaherty?
That was the only thing.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B and C.
I'll second it.
Second.
I will make.
The microphone, make a motion.
Well, I said I'd entertain a motion, but I'll go ahead and make the motion, and who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, Mister Tinkle, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, all in favor. Now, supervisor comments, so I started down here the last time, I'll start with you, Mister Tinkle.
Okay, uh, wanna clarify something that came up or give more information on something that came up at the last meeting? Uh, since our discussion of the LC SO and the pulling of the, uh, uh, what do you call it, units from Gateway Greens, they have come back and rescinded that. They have changed their deal that unless and until you have a modification to your agreement, they will continue to honor the other, uh, uh, aspects of the current agreement, even if you are not MUTCD compliant. Uh, and in fact, they are, uh, how do I say it, they are denying that the phone call ever existed.
We do not, we're not denying it this time.
Yeah, well, this, this isn't Mission Impossible and it didn't vaporize. And, and I'm, 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 I'm not putting up with it, uh, because there were two of us on the phone that heard it. And so there was a discussion with the county and the county attorney on that, uh, we're gonna be asking for some apologies, but it does bring up a problem. Uh, it's my understanding that they withdrew our deal in Stony Brook and pulled the, uh, document that was never approved in the first place or wasn't approvable in the first place. That leads us to that next meeting, I'd like to have a discussion, uh, let's have the CDD file a request with the county to enter into an agreement with them to do that, such that if we are going to be in the business of monitoring, uh, traffic flow, traffic, uh, related issues, in Stony Brook, we got a contract to do it with, it's legal.
I don't know that it was ever determined that the contract that exists isn't legal.
It's not been pulled. I heard they denied it.
No.
No, that what they've done, they, they're reviewing.
Well, how can they, how they can, they review it on the entity, we didn't, we didn't authorize it, it's not in our name, we own the roads, can't be another property doing it.
They're reviewing it and they're, they're, that's.
That's legal?
No, I'm just saying, they have the opportunity and the ability to review that and that's what they're doing.
In other words, a final determination has not been made.
But if you watch.
Somebody's getting different story from the people I'm getting, I'm getting it straight from the commissioner, it's been denied on the grounds that it was not a legal document to begin with, it was not authorized by or in the name of Gateway CDD.
No, that's being reviewed. But if you, if the board wants me to bring something back.
My point is if it's, when, when they deny it, let's bring it back and, and file for it in the name of the Gateway CDD.
If they do. If they do, okay.
Wait and see what we hear from them.
See what they do, yep.
Okay.
And in the meantime, we're waiting to hear from the AGO anyway, so all this is kinda up in the air.
Yes.
All the balls are up there.
Other than that?
And on that, on that note, let me just hand out to you, without all the attachments, the, well, it is all with the AGO request. And on that, on that note, let me just hand out to you, without all the attachments, the, well, it is all with the AGO request. So you all have a copy of it and also the zoning verification letter request.
The other, other...
Without all the exhibits to that.
Okay, the other two issues I've got are the FPL easement, where are we at on that, we gotta get that.
We should have an answer in the next few days on that.
Okay.
And you can see this, what, what I was trying to do in that zoning verification letter was cou- cover those areas that we talked about, not wanting to have the district getting stuck with the county coming back and saying you do not have enough acreage or linear park acreage and therefore you, Gateway CDD, have to come up with it. So that's what the intent is by the zoning verification.
Is that, is that that confusion over the two hundred thirty-eight acres?
Well, I, I, what I did if I...
Cuz the acreage didn't equal the total of what we got.
The acreage in the development order is less than that and that's what I cite to in my letter.
That's my point.
Yes, and that's what, the acreage for the FPL easement, say a hundred sixty-two acres and the acreage in the DRI PUD, I think...
I thought it said two thirty-eight.
It, no, they actually changed it to a lesser number, bear with me, we can steal this back, we'll give it a second. I'm sorry.
The issue is, I, I totally agree, I wanna make sure...
Hundred thirty-five acres is what I'm saying.
When we get that park or we get that FPL, do we with all of our other acreage equal what's in the DRI? Cuz if it doesn't, how we gonna produce it? We have no place to produce it.
And, and that's what that, part of, part of zoning verification is to confirm the required acreage for community parks is satisfied by the FPL easement lands being a designated park, which was a prior zoning verification. And then as part of that confirmation and verification, I'm asking, confirm that the entire acreage of the FPL easement lands verified previously as open space, which can be used as a park, satisfies and fulfills the following obligations of the DRI Development Order. And that listed a hundred thirty, WGC will dedicate or cost to be dedicated parcels of land totaling a hundred thirty-five acres for community parks. That's what I'm trying to get, I mean, whether or not they think that's outside or within the scope of a ZVL zoning verification letter, I don't know, but they're checking on that now.
Well, we know one thing, the, the acreage that's in the development order, we do not have that if we do not count the FPL easement, we're way short.
I understand.
Okay. Last one is, uh, the people are calling me, especially at, uh, Daniel's, uh, Commerce Lake Drive East, where do we stand on that?
I've not gotten with those folks yet, you do that, okay, no, thank you.
That's all I have.
Mrs...
That's on me, so...
Mrs. Flaherty? All right, thank you, I only have a couple little things. The Army Engineers, did they ever send us a letter back about that?
No, they didn't, and we were really waiting to hear about them holding hearing, but what the developer did was changed his plans and moved the development boundary outside of the wetland and outside of the drainage area, so it became a non-issue.
What are you talking about? The apartment, the apartment?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Tony and I were looking at it, it looks like it's not an issue.
Yeah.
Right, right now.
Right now, okay. Current, current, okay. I have some issues with the customer care that you request everyone to use, because there are some residents who would like to talk to people and get some answers. They don't mind doing the customer care if it's asked them nicely to do, but they still would like a person to talk to. And that's all I have to say?
And when we have service requests, but we talk to people on the phone every day about things like that. A lot of people, it's easier for them if they have something with a pothole or a service issue to send it in and then it generates a work order and then we have a way to respond to them if it's done versus... And, and I think what you're getting to is, uh, some of the residents were asking Shannon in Stony Brook to make calls for them for service. And I said, we don't take things secondhand, if a resident has an issue, we need it from them, because I don't go on someone's property or check a meter or a water line because a cam called me. Because we've had people call before and say, go check it out, and then the property owner finds out and says, what are you doing on my property? We also don't get complete information, a lot of times we'll get, oh, it's over there, well, where, who called it in?
Well, I think...
I don't know who called it in.
I think on the, the particular, and this came up in our HOA meeting, a resident was walking down Pebblebrook on the main road and they noticed a whole side of the sidewalk, and so they called Shannon, who's the cam, and then she called the district and was told, you know, you can't, you can't make this request for repair, it needs to be the resident, but yet it was on CDD property, it wasn't in front of a residence home. So there should be, I think, certain instances when it's on main road, not in front of a residence property, that the cam should be able to report things.
I, I would agree with that.
We have an issue with that because we asked her, who made the request, where it is, oh, well, it's somewhere here on Pebblebrook.
Okay, so she wasn't, she couldn't...
Didn't know, didn't know, I said, so do you want, and I said this to her, so you want me to drive down Pebblebrook and look for this? Or can you, whoever the lady was, could you ask her to call me so we could get some complete information to address it? And then when we do, let her know what happened. And that's what happens when you get a go-between, is you, you don't know who called, what they're, what the real problem is. A lot of times you'll go out there and it isn't anything near what's been relayed to you.
Okay, got that, go ahead.
Were temporary lines allowed in Stony Brook when they were putting in the cable? And laid along the back of lot lines in, in the LME?
I'm not aware of any temporary...
No temporary lines were laid, okay? And were there any lines laid or, uh, jacked under, uh, bored under, uh, an LME or within an LME?
No.
All that work was in the front of the home, some was done in the back.
It was all underneath driveways.
I heard from the previous board at Gateway Greens that we recalled, there was some statements made that agreements were made with the other vendor that they were going to go with that we've terminated, that they had been told they could, uh, put the, uh, fiber in the lake management easement, and I said, news to me.
Never been approached about anything like that.
So that, that, well, I don't, I don't think you will be now.
Even with the previous vendor, the one we almost, that we were looking at, we didn't almost go with them, it was gonna be through residents' backyards, but not in the LME, it was never gonna be in the LME.
Because in Gateway Greens, the LME twenty feet goes right, like my house, goes right up to my lanai. So there, there is no room, no room to put it.
Well, and the question is whether or not they have the legal ability to do it, PUE, public utility easement, or...
I know it, I told them that.
And or cable easement.
Yeah, if you have an LME that has enough room to get a PUE inside of it or outside of it, you could do it.
If it's on the plat.
If it's on the plat, but no, that's not what they were talking about. And I said, guys, I think somebody's smoking something, cuz you aren't gonna get in that LME, no way.
With that in mind, it is five thirty-nine and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Is it cheaper to go on the back like that with the LME?
The reason they wanted us to do it in backyards was because all the utilities...
In the front, okay.
See? But we don't have any room in our backyards.
I know that, I know that...
They're trying to avoid the water lines or something.